The start of our Facebook Live, or our work session, I'll call the meeting to order. For those who might not recall, we do not have to have a quorum in order to have a work session, so we're going to go over, we've got one presentation, and then we've got our agenda items that we'll go over that will require a little fleshing out. So, I want to welcome everyone, and also welcome students back while we've got a work session to do that, and I'll do it again on Tuesday as well. So, Mr. Jeremy Murdock has been kind enough to be here today to give us kind of a walkthrough of the Christmas decorations that I'm, that we've got on the agenda for expenditures for our beautification money. I don't know if y'all noticed last year, but our Christmas decorations are starting to look very sad, and I would like us to be much more attractive, and welcoming, and lighted, and all those sorts of things for this upcoming Christmas. And so, this is an, this is an effort to do that. And so, Jeremy, you're with Main Street, and he also has a heck of a picture-taking eye, so he's gonna, he's gonna kinda help us go through this. So, if you would, please, sir.
Yeah, well, thank y'all for allowing me to be here. My name's Jeremy Murdock, and I know pretty much everybody, but here on behalf of Sparkle Main Street Association, specifically the Design Committee. And when we actually started, from some photography work back last year, what's triggered this discussion about the Christmas decorations and the fact that, build up, we're presenting ourselves like we really want to downtown during that season. Also, it's a time of year where students are moving away, traffic starts to slow down, it's tough on our businesses that time of year. So, looking away to enhance how we look during that season, those couple of months, hopefully attract people from the outside as a destination that time of year when it's typically slow for our businesses. Another, our current Christmas decorations, as part of that, all of a sudden, the old man in the group, it seems like, looking around, 10 years ago, when we updated with the decorations we have now, it's likewise about a decade or so. Those were early generation LED lights and things like that, I think. So, we're just trying to enhance our local old Main Street here at Christmas. So, we've put together somewhat of a proposal that is a combination of using what we have, enhancing what we already have, and then adding some new elements to enhance. So, just to walk you through, and I've devised a few announcements up here as well. One really short-term thing we thought we could do was wrap the streetlights down, or the street trees downtown. You can see the example from Natchez down there. We've tried something similar in the past, and so leave them up all year. That's a big maintenance issue because the trees grow so fast. So, we're just looking at seasonally wrapping the trees to create kind of an impact during that season. So, that's something that we can do that's fairly low cost and short-term. The other thing is taking our existing garland, sorry, existing garland and then wreaths that are around the streetlights, and rewrapping those, taking the old lights off, rewrapping those. That's an example of using what we have. And then to tie into that, do some cross-street decorations there with the wreaths that would tie into the garland and the street poles. And you can see the historic photograph at the top, you know, I guess that's the 50s or so. We had some cross lights in England Main Street, so trying to tap into that, the historic photograph, the historic look, with some cross-street garland and wreaths.
Those would be lighted, right?
Those would be lighted. Yeah, the photo, you can't really see it, but they're lighted. So, part of what we're trying to accomplish as well, because you can imagine, there's a ton of different types of decorations you can choose from, it'll sell you just about anything. We want to have something that will have an impact, not only at night, but also during the daytime. So, that's why we're starting to lean toward the garland wreaths and bows, look like that would have an impact during the day as well as at night, all lighted, of course. And then, looking at some, what we call some impact pieces, or some focal points in key locations like the Hub Plaza, maybe the Courthouse Plaza, some big locations like that. They have the Hoover size ornaments that we feel like might have some branding and sponsorship potential, as well as these larger pieces that you can walk through, and looking for photo opportunities and things, again, just to attract people downtown. So, these focal point pieces, they would have individual ornaments that we could potentially scatter throughout the community of people, we could find sponsorships and things like that. Again, just to provide people some distinct pieces that will attract them here. And then, this was just a, it's a way to enhance our existing city Christmas tree. And you see the photos there, that was my best attempt to make it look as good as possible. I think if you remember what it looks like in person, it's, one, there's nothing going on there in the day, so it's just this big green tree during the day. And at night, you can see, especially on the right photo, where it's big patches of missing lights and things like that. So, either it's purchasing a new tree, or partnering with some people that might help us with ornaments or things like that to enhance our existing tree, so it's attractive during the daytime as well. Those are the type things we're proposing at least for now.
Okay. We might have like an ornament day, or somebody, everybody come to put an ornament on the tree, or something like that, that'd be kinda cool. Well, and one of the things, and I know when we went to MML, you know, one of the beauties of going to MML is going to the, to the big conference hall where people have all these things. And those guys who had some of those big walkthrough things also had said they could create a cowbell, so a lighted cowbell for the hub. So, I sent that to Mark McGee, who's pretty much, you know, paneling the hub, Kate's building the hub, and I haven't heard back from him yet. He might have decided it was a little, a little pricey, but they could do like a 12-foot cowbell, if they sit a kind of a rendering, it was pretty cool. It'd be a neat, it'd be a neat deal. So, maybe we can twist his arm and talk him into doing it along with, along with other stuff. But, this is on the agenda for us to spend beautification money, and we've got the account, so, you know, and that money's been sitting there accumulating for beautification purposes, for whether it was murals or, you know, other things. And so, we thought this might be the right time to go ahead and partner with Main Street, and they're gonna do the labor, and I'm not sure what else y'all are, y'all are set to do, but plan an event maybe around putting them up? I mean, I don't know.
Yeah, plan some of our install, and then work for other sponsors as well.
Yeah, so that's, that's why I had asked Jeremy to come visit with everybody, because it is on the agenda, and I knew Main Street was, you know, helping drive this. So, anyway, any questions of Mr. Murdock?
No, no other questions. Money, what's the account balance?
Uh, 13,000. 13,000 something, something, it's in your, it's in the packet.
Okay, I'm sorry.
So, no, it's fine, it's fine. I just, I had to look it up too, and the account number's on there as well. Lisa's, Lisa sent it to me, so I put it on the cover sheet, so it should be there. So, any questions on the line?
Just don't put them up. Just don't put them up before Halloween.
Oh, yeah, really.
Or maybe before Thanksgiving.
Yeah, we want to do the Walmart and put everything out for the season, you know, two seasons ahead.
Yeah, the other one, probably, is not for Halloween.
Okay, all right. And Mr. Beatty, join us up here at the table, please, because I was about to forget you again. Any questions of Mr. Murdock?
No, thank you.
Okay. Do I need to get a mask or something where you sit up by me?
And Bobby.
All right. Thank you, thank you so much, Jeremy.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Appreciate, appreciate you taking the time to come out and do that, and let us know from Main Street perspective, if there's anything else we can help with, because Terry's guys are always very good about helping make this happen, so we need to give the electric department some props as well.
And you'd have.
Time, time, and appreciation, okay? All right, sounds good.
134 questions.
How many?
134.
130, okay.
The pressure.
All right, thank you. All right, well, that was, that was pretty quick and easy. So, we can go through our recess meeting, this will be our last meeting in, in August before we get into the, what is supposed to be fall, which we just kinda start with September with the kids back in school. So, Mr. Latimer.
Yes, ma'am.
You, you have looked at the minutes, and they all look like there's something that you're in support of, and all, they're all good, and all that sort of business?
Yes, ma'am.
They've passed the test?
They've passed the test.
All right, so we go with consent on the two sets of minutes?
Consent.
All right, thank you. And we have some introductions. Mr. Ashford is gonna get me names so that we can add those to the agenda, so, and we'll do a welcome for, for students and faculty, and, you know, back into town, and all get rolling. Anything that anyone wants to have on the agenda so that it's labeled? No? Okay. We'll have citizens' comments, we have no public appearances, and we have three public hearings. One is the variance, Daniel's here with us, if there are any questions about it, this is related, but actually, the first two are both related to triangle crossing, which have gone through the process?
Yes.
And the recommendations are?
Unanimous on all.
Unanimous on all, okay. And so, we will be holding that as a public hearing, and we'll see, did you have any comments from anybody, expect anybody to show up for the public hearing piece of that, any expectation?
Uh, just the representative.
All right, good, well, we will look forward to that. And then we'll have a public hearing on the budget and the tax levy. So, this is the opportunity when Alderman Sistrunk gets to shine, because she's, Alderman Sistrunk, and Lisa, I'll give you, I'll give you props too, Lisa, because she has been doing yeoman's task on, on the budget. So, Ms. Sistrunk, if you want to share?
Uh, the, the highlights, the highlights, the things that people are always most interested in is there's no proposed tax increase. There, we have budgeted for the $1.5 million in capital improvements that's been our target over time, so we've budgeted for that this year, and concurrently identified a source for that for the next year.
Thank you.
We have budgeted for the salary survey, we're unclear about the implementation date, we've put it in a contingency fund until we get the final survey and know what the numbers are gonna be. That will also drive the implementation date. We're gonna do it as soon as we can possibly afford to do it. And then, the two other groups that have asked us for additional money that we have accommodated in the budget are the Humane Society and the Library. So, we're hoping to, to fund those to the extent that we can.
And the good news is, I don't think any entity, Tibahaw County or the school, are planning on doing any tax increases, so we are looking at a nice, steady level.
Tax share.
Tax share, which would be great. I'll, except, I say that, I shouldn't say that, this is a reassessment year, so we will see probably some changes based on reassessment, but nothing that the, any one of the entities have done to make any of those changes. So, we will be looking forward to seeing what that does to all of us.
So, it should be a pretty routine budget as budgets go.
Yes, so we will hold our first budget hearing this time, and the second one next time with the adoption for September the 7th. So, and we are properly noticed, everybody, is that correct, Ms. Lisa?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right, cool, thank you. All righty, under Mayor's business, this is the beautification funds in conjunction with the Main Street support of the Christmas seasonal decorations. And I am happy to entertain putting it out there, but if we can do consent on it, I would absolutely love that.
Consent.
Consent? Okay, great, thank you very much. Okay, so now I get to go into my explanatory opportunities. Under here, we have Kimley Horn, and I sat down with Henry Meiner, who is also working the Build Grant, if y'all recall. And so, one of the things I'm hoping that we will do is that we will have the Build Grant, which will create this marvelous thing for 182, with a focus between Washington Street or Dale Connor and Jackson Street, and Lafayette ends up being the, sort of that, that detailed area, that place where you go into the downtown, the core of the downtown. So, we've lighted Lafayette, I would like us to some point, light Lafayette going down to meet the Build Grant. But, in the meantime, I want us to just look at downtown in a way that will create an area that kinda complements all that pedestrian activity, creates an area where we might have more restaurants that want to come out and be a part of the, the downtown, encourage that. And so, Kimley Horn, in doing the, which is why they're on here, Kimley Horn, in doing the Build Grant area, to me, translates nicely into they give you that same feel in the downtown area. So, what I'd like to do is get a couple of proposals, not proposals, uh, proposed drawings or proposed ways to address downtown, to create that feeling of additional restaurant space, additional pedestrian space, not doing away with parking before somebody just goes berserk on us, but, but just maybe enhancing the sidewalk area, you might be able to take it out as a deck, I don't know what, you know, somebody who's more creative than I am could do with it. But, for what I perceive to be a fairly minimal amount of money, I think this is the time to do it, because one of the things we also said we were gonna do was overlay Main Street. Our Main Street is, hadn't been overlaid in probably 20 years. It is time, and it is our, it is our, it is who we are. It's City Hall to, to the university, and it's where we want people to be, and, and so we're gonna need to overlay it. But before we do that, I think a wholesale look at what it would be if we changed the design, gave it a different feel, now would be the opportunity to do that. And I felt like the amount of money, which is $10,000, is not, certainly not nothing, but it's also not a huge amount for us to find out if there are opportunities for us to do some dramatic and, well, dramatic's probably a little strong, well, no, maybe not, some dramatic and, and significant things for our downtown. So, that's what this is about. And I am hopeful, I've, I've chatted, I think, off and on with everybody about doing this, but in this case, it seems to be an opportune time based on our goal of next year overlaying Main Street. So, questions of me, questions about the concept?
One of the things that's come up is, since we're gonna be repaving, and since we're looking at a redesign of, of that area, should we look at water and sewer? And that's currently ongoing, right?
Yes, Terry, Terry and his guys.
So, we're gonna address all that concurrently.
Are looking, so that, you know, we don't overlay Main Street, it looks great, and suddenly we have a water leak. So, Terry and his guys are evaluating the status of the water lines, sewer lines, and all the lines on Main Street. And also, as a part of this, if we were able to manage, manage to do this, then we could also upgrade the electric and offer additional water options or access options on Main Street for events. So, I think that it really will serve us nicely for a long time into the future. So, it has been 20 years since we did anything to Main Street, including when they did the stamped sidewalks and the railings and all that sort of stuff. So, I am, I'm thinking that this would be just a really cool opportunity for us, so anything?
I think so too, and, and we do have a, a funding source for the repaving, so.
Right.
So, it's, it's really just giving us the opportunity to put it all together in a nice package, and I have no problems with it being on consent.
Well, I want to talk to Alderman, I want to get feedback from Alderman, because it is his ward.
That's right.
Not to ignore you at all, but it is your ward, so, you know, from, from.
I have no, I have no problem with being on consent, but three, Alderman is the absence of, you know, I'd just rather leave all consent.
Okay.
I ain't got a problem with it, but I put it on consent too tonight with everybody.
All right, that'll be great, thank you. Mr. Brooks, anything from you?
Uh, no, I, I do want to ask a question, because, you know, one of my hot button issues of Mr. Kim. So, will we overlay Main Street, because I know we got those sensors for our lights in the pavement, if some of them aren't working right, will that be an opportunity to go to the radars that we talked about?
With your look at it, I think I seen some numbers.
You did?
And we're talking probably in that $40,000, $50,000 certain intersection, but, you know, we could factor that in with the foundation, there would be any problem.
And we've got, those are mast arms.
They are.
So, they were.
Basically, the smaller it does, you miss for the ground weight on it.
Yes.
So, it'd be a good opportunity.
Otherwise, you'd have to go back into the pavement with new stuff, because you're gonna overlay it anyway.
That's right.
Yep. And I guess, I guess.
If that's a good idea.
I think one of the policy things that we should talk about, and I'm, I'm all about trying to sync lights where it makes sense, but in a downtown retail area, it might be an area where you want people to have to slow down, stop occasionally, see what businesses are there that they haven't noticed in the past. We don't necessarily want them zipping through. And with trying to make it a more pedestrian-oriented street, it may make sense, and we're talking about three lights in a two-block area there. In, in a more pedestrian-oriented area, we may want cars to slow down and stop for safety reasons too. On Highway 12, I'm much more likely to be with you on that one.
Okay, Alderman Beatty?
No, thank you.
Okay. All righty, and then last but not least, one of the things that I think is time for us to do is start looking seriously about coordinating with the state for ARPA use of their funds. I have heard from our lobbyists that Lieutenant Governor Hoesman has said that if we get projects to him, that he will be supportive of sharing the state's ARPA money with the municipalities that come forward. And so, not to, I don't want to slow roll anything, if we, you know, if we can be first in line, then I think this is an opportunity for us to go ahead and take advantage of that potential, so.
So, that's in addition to the 3.1 or 6.2 that we've.
Yes, it would be, he would supplement it, either match it, or, or at least supplement it to a certain extent. And so, you know, I'm always willing to be first in line to ask for something.
Absolutely.
So, I thought if we could get the comprehensive, or get proposals for the update of the comprehensive master parks plan, that we could use those ARPA funds for that, because y'all all got Chris's memo about the use of ARPA money. And so, since we have been progressive and proactive in taking care of our own water and sewer as it go forward, that with, you know, with certain areas certainly, you know, in, in need, but we will continue to look at that, that this would be an opportunity for funds where we don't have any planned funds for doing some major impact deals. And remind me to get with you about Moncrief, because I learned, well, hell, let's just talk about it. I was having lunch with somebody yesterday, and she was saying that they had such a thing as like a bubble over a swimming pool, that's a, that's like retractable or removable, so you could turn your swimming pool, if you were to do it, into something that could be worked more on a year-round basis. I thought, well, man, you know, I never heard of such a thing, so I thought that was a cool idea, and that might be something that would play into the, into the park improvement. So, anyway, I made a point to myself to Google it, but, okay. So, and, and going on your comment for item B, I'm gonna assume that you want to do the same for item C, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, well, we will not put that on consent, but we will bring it up again at the board meeting. So, we have also consideration of exclusive sales agency contract related to 101 Airport Road, and Chris, you've, you've gotten that clean, a clean draft of that?
Yeah, and kudos to Lisa for squeezing that on, we got it late this morning, and she was able to get it on the agenda. This is the brokerage agreement to sale, sell the property at 101 Airport Road. It's a standard agreement, 6% commission. We all need to look at it between now and Tuesday, but I think it's ripe for the agenda, and they're eager to get this property on the market, and that's what this contract does.
Yes, and in fact, I met with him this morning. Do we need to flesh out the language of this a little more?
I don't think so, I think we got it cleaned up.
No, 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 I mean the language of the agenda item.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Because it was just a, kind of a placeholder.
And I didn't misspell the word exclusive.
Yes, you did.
Yes, we can tweak that agenda.
Okay, I was just thinking we might have, a little more clarity to it if we put, put different language to it.
Sure, listen, I'll get together after the meeting, we'll polish it up.
Okay, all right, is that consent for that one? All right, good deal. And then we have the grant in the amount of $24,979 for, from MBEQ for the, I think these are for the use of personnel, or for, for labor, for us to work the recycling, is that correct?
Two individuals and some, I think like growers, a lot of stuff, which I'll do.
Okay, all right. Consent on that?
Consent.
Good deal, thank you. All right, community development, these are fairly easy, we've had one applicant for the HPC, consent for that one?
Consent.
Ms. Corbin Camp is gonna come back and work with us on things. And then, reappointing Scott Willard to the Landscape Advisory Board.
Consent.
Consent for that one? Okay. And then, the one Historic Preservation Commission, they were gonna do an in-person, and then they pulled the trigger on going virtual a couple of days ago, so it is now virtual training, but we have to have that in order to keep our HPC going, so consent for that one? All righty. And then we have preliminary plat for the approval of Encore subdivision. And Daniel, I want you just to do a little highlight of that one, if you would, please, just.
That is a land that is directly east of Sparkle Academy, and they're basically just divided into four large lots or developments, showing up future proposed group. We've been working with them since last year on this plan, they follow with DNC, DNC, you know.
Okay, all right, so this would be one that would probably be from a preliminary plat approval standpoint, is good for consent?
Consent.
Consent, okay. And then, a request for final plat approval on Laurel Point Lot 3, it's the south side of Land Lane, 430 feet east of Victory Lane. And Daniel, quickly on that one too?
This is a minor subdivision plat, so it goes straight from DRC to the more of Alprica. This is the area of land that's directly west of the driveway for Sparkle Academy, that connects to Land Lane. They're basically making a decent stem in Land Lane, they're making commercial, and then everything below that would do it for the school.
So, they're basically donating to the school, right? Okay, consent for that? Okay, good deal. All right, engineering, this consideration of declaring a plotter surplus and make, and replacing it with a new one. Apparently ours is not working very well, or at all, and so this is an opportunity for us to get a new one, so consent for that one? All right, thank you. And then we have the claim stocket and acceptance of the July 2021 financials. And Lisa, you're good with the financials as well? Okay, consent for that one?
Yes.
Okay. Authorization from Mr. Parks to travel to the National Fire Academy, and he's, he's with us, are you gonna go learn something new, Mr. Parks?
Absolutely.
All right, thank you very much, consent for that one? And then HR, we've got authorization for hiring full-time desk attendants at Park and Rec, consent for that? Any issues there? Okay. Temporary pay increase, Mr. Smiley. Mr. Smiley has been operating in the capacity of a department head and been doing an excellent job. And so, since we had no particular thoughts on the horizon, or no applicants on the horizon that would rise to the level of the work Mr. Smiley's been doing, I think it would be appropriate for us to show him that appreciation and give him that temporary pay increase to the level of the department head, so.
How much would that be?
Exact number?
Seventy.
Exact number is 70,000. I didn't know if you had any pennies and cents to go with that now, so it'd be 70,000.
Consent.
Consent for that? Okay. Then hiring William Young as a maintenance worker in the Sanitation and Environmental Services Department?
Consent.
Consent? And then, Mr. Vandenberg as a part-time recreation aide at Parks and Rec. Consent for that? Okay. IT, the kiosk for courts, and we're excited about this, because this will give us an opportunity, it's all-weather, and we're debating where we're gonna put it. It may be inside, it may be outside, but the purchase, it remains the same, it'll bolt and unbolt, and we can move it if we need to, but we're gonna start with it, I believe, the consensus is still in the police department? In that lot, open lobby?
I'm not sure if there's a consensus.
There's not a consensus? All right, well, when, when we get it, we will make sure that everybody's aware of where it goes.
That's the great thing, is the positioning is just flexible, and like the mayor said, it can go indoors or outdoors. We would like it to be available 24/7.
Right.
Folks on their way to work before 6:00 or 7:00 or 8:00 in the morning can swing by or in the evening.
Or the weekend.
And it'll, it should divert some, some significant walk-in traffic from the lobby to pay.
Right.
And things like that. That's something we've researched well, and have looked at in the past, and we feel like the time is now to go ahead and implement that.
Yeah, it'd be much more efficient, and Terry has had very good luck with the kiosk that the electric department is using. So, this will be an opportunity, because you don't have to now wait from 8:00 to 5:00 to come.
That's right.
Pay a ticket or, or pay your court costs, so. Anyway, looking forward to that one, consent for that one?
Consent.
Okay. And then, the telephone system, we are, how many years?
That's right, so our current phone system, we bought with this building, I guess about six years ago, and that phone system is dependent on a specific piece of hardware. The company that makes that phone system has since stopped making that phone system, and so in the event that, that this, this piece of hardware fails, we'll be in a, in And so in the event that this, this piece of hardware fails, we'll be in a, in a rope of none because there really are no replacements available, at least not new ones. So the phone system we're proposing is less dependent on any specific piece of hardware. It's more software-based, so it's very flexible and should last much, much longer. It'll have a nice long life compared to this current.
And it coordinates with everywhere else, right?
That's right. That's right. The electric department went on this same phone system about a year or so ago, and so now for the first time ever, we'll have the ability to extension now between facilities.
Which would be great.
Which is nice. You don't have to say, let's hang up and dial 323 or whatever. You can say, let me transfer.
Yeah.
So between here and Parks and PD and electric.
And that might as much more customer service.
That's right.
Which would be great. So, all right. Consent for that one?
Consent.
Thank you. All right. And we have an acceptance of a driving, impaired driving enforcement grant in the amount of $90,979, which pays for two, two officers, is that correct? And all the accouter amount that goes with them? Okay. So delighted to have those, those grants coming our way. Consent for that? Thank you. And then another grant in the amount of $23,000, which is for seatbelt speeding and child restraint enforcement, which is also great. So thank you. And y'all working those grants is really good, between city clerk and the police department. Christopher, Officer Jackson, that's not right, Corporal Jack.
Corporal Jack.
Corporal Jack, yes. And then we're going to put a truck. We're going to put a truck on, for the sanitation department that, that we knew was supposed to be there, but we got accidentally left off. So we're going to cure that, and it is a truck to, it's a replacement, no, it's a repair.
Transmission.
Yeah. Transmission repair.
Transmission and block piles.
Right. So, and it's about $12,000. So.
Consent.
We, we, you can put on consent, Lisa, when we get, when we get it on the agenda. That'd be great. Thank you. All right. Utilities. Advertising for replacement bucket truck. Do we have one that we're going to put on surplus, Terry? Or we just advertising for a new one?
We will get rid of this one, although it's.
Two years out, right?
It's two years.
Yeah. Well, and it may be more than that based on materials and stuff. So consent for advertising?
Consent.
Okay. And then authorization to accept the lowest quote to purchase 750 tons of crushed limestone. This is for us to get the timber out of that piece of property that we have for the laydown, well, for the rubbish piles and stuff that we're going to be able to burn that the water, sewer, and electric department have gotten, and the street department's going to be able to use. So consent for that one?
Consent.
All right. And that takes us to the end of our agenda. We also, if you recall, we have a 2:00 set up for an executive session, so that, that's on that special call as opposed to on this agenda. So aside from that, that should be it. Anyone have anything they want to discuss or, or talk about before we adjourn? Okay. All right. Thank you, everyone. Have a great weekend, and we will see you on Tuesday. All right. See you.